In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, signed by Governor on February 15, 2022, I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media, the Select Board's office via Zoom, and ask if there's anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Let the minutes reflect that no one else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. All right. Call this meeting to order at 6:38 after our executive session. Public comments. Is there anyone here for public comment? Yes, go ahead.
Representing the newly formed Russell School Committee. And I spoke with Gary Berg yesterday briefly about getting the committee a tour of the building. And asked him, I says, you know, I know you have the keys and we can get through there. But as you know, as far as protocol and liability and legality, we should be asked to select board, should we ask the town administrator for permission to get in there? And I'll just, you know, yeah, go ahead and see if the select board's okay with the building committee, you know, going into the Russell School. But we're.
I don't have a problem with the guys having a tour.
We can't take up public comments. Yeah, I think we turn it over to Carolyn.
Yeah.
Turned over to Carolyn.
Okay.
Yeah.
So other than that, there's no issue with any of the board members? Okay, I will forward the information. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for being on the committee.
What happened to what? It doesn't show that. It's hitting Jane, Amy, and Joyce right there. The top one, it's yellow. And I have the speaker plugged in that's picking up people's voices.
But we're not showing up here.
So you're not seeing these right here. That camera is right here.
Oh, so someone's right there.
This table right here. Yeah, it's right there, see?
Does that say that?
That's his name on it.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, yes.
Any other public comment?
Anybody waving to?
You don't see any hands on me.
Is that everyone?
Just yell out anybody on Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom have any public comments?
Everyone's muted.
They're gonna mute themselves.
Oh, okay.
Or they can raise their hands if they would like to and out.
All right. Yes.
This is all.
Would you, would you please come up and sit here so you can be heard?
I'm sitting right there. And if you could identify yourself, that would really help.
Tell which chair this is.
The middle one.
The all the way to the right over there.
Oh, all the way.
The way to the right of this.
Yep, so you're gonna sit right in that chair. One more and there you go. Musical chairs.
The process of getting a tenant elected person on our, on our board, who came up with the idea that it's the select board that chooses the person and not the tenants? If you don't have a tenant association? We wanted to know why tenants have to have an association in order to be, in other words, the select board is deciding. Why isn't the tenant's association just exist in order for the tenants to choose the person? Who came up with that rule or guideline?
Came from the town board.
I'm sorry, what? If you don't have a tenant's organization at a senior housing, the select board has to choose the tenant representative for our board. Who came up with it, that you need to have a tenant's organization? It just can't be voted on a general vote for tenants who live in Golden Corps? I would have to think that. And because, you know, and is this the first year that this is happening all around Massachusetts? Or is this just a Hadley situation?
I believe it's a Hadley situation.
A Hadley situation. It's up to.
Come on.
Okay.
With your, yeah, you can.
So it's.
No, we need to sit for you recorded visual.
Kamala Rogers with the Housing Department. It's regulation that's commended by the Department of Housing and was passed by the legislature. So the information that we sent out to the town and to the board members and to the residents is all information that came down from the HCD. And the town is following the guidelines. And just with the new housing reform notes, they're mandating that there is a resident on every board. And it's, this is happening across the Commonwealth and all the houses.
So we understand that there has to be a resident who lives in Golden Corps to represent the tenants. But who's to say that the tenants can't pick the person?
If that's in the regulation that the Department of Housing.
Yeah, within the legislation. And why is it that this wasn't provided for people to read or to observe? So we understand it more. Yeah.
This is public comment. For a different source than how many of your conversations.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, next on the agenda is the Hadley Housing Tenant Representative. Unfortunately. Oh, I'm sorry, Consent Agenda. I'm rushing. Thank you. Consent Agenda. All right, so today on the Consent Agenda, we have the automatic amusement licenses for Fun Hub Action Park for 25 amusement devices. So anyone here to talk to that?
They do not. I told them they did not need to come because they explained it to y'all at the last hearing when they were requesting a liquor license. And they told you the kinds of gangs they were gonna have. And you all seemed very satisfied with that, so.
He was here.
They were here for the liquor license, yes, but they weren't here for the automatic. They didn't make them come back today.
All their gangs are listed at the end of the application as well.
This is Fun Hub at the mall.
Oh, Fun Hub.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bobby and Mikel.
Okay.
So. Police have reviewed it, fire chief has reviewed it, building inspector has reviewed it. I see no problem with this, with their automatic music licenses that I'm asking of.
Motion to accept the, you have any minutes or warrants? No? Make a motion to accept the amusement license for Fun Hub Action Park?
Second.
I'm gonna get, Amy said it first, Molly, but you have to be quicker. All right, roll call vote, please, Jennifer.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chugaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yeah.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we can move on to the Hadley Housing Tenant Representative. Several things have come up since this was put on the agenda. There were three applicants, Reese Smythe Free, Melissa Rose House, and Tracy Riley. Tracy has withdrawn her application for personal reasons. And Melissa has COVID and is unable to be here or on Zoom. So it doesn't seem appropriate that we can choose someone if we can't interview the two candidates. And only one of them is here tonight.
Who's the other one?
The other is Reese.
Oh, Reese, hi.
So I think we just have to put this off for two weeks.
I agree.
All right, do we need a motion to put it off, Jennifer? Okay, we'll put it on the next agenda, please, Carolyn. All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next is Hadley Media Director Candidate Interview. Jen?
I'd like to introduce you to Alex.
Hi, Alex.
Hello, Alex. He is our top and best choice for the Hadley Media Director position. He's been working in Granby as their media director for multiple years. And he's got a great job over there in the building there, media presence. Simon and I both sat with him in the interview, gave him a tour of the setup and where he's working. And I'd like to extend an interview.
All right, so this is an interview, so.
Will you be leaving Granby to come here?
Yes.
Try to do two at once.
Is there a timeline on that?
So working on a gradual transition. I know you guys need to use over. And, and they have to suck the lead directly. So I'm gonna make sure they have the resources and help that I need if I have to have a easy, smooth transition. How long is it? Hopefully not. I'm hoping not too long, hopefully maybe by, by next month I'm fully transitioned out or even sooner, so.
So you see it gradually, you'll be here a little and then a little more?
Yeah. So pretty much probably in Granby morning, daytime, here tomorrow night time, so. I pretty much delegate a bunch of myself to staff in Granby, so. So I'll be more production based here. That's the goal line, so.
We've also had a few applicants for John's position. And we're hoping that Alex can help actually choose who would get to work with him.
That'd be great.
So can that happen before he's full, before Alex is full time?
All right.
Okay, that's, that's good news also.
Yes.
And this, this zooming hybrid stuff is second nature to you? Absolutely. Beautiful.
Where were you at six o'clock?
I already asked him that and realized it was inappropriate to use the work field yet.
I had to stop at the Dunkin'.
Thirty minute probation period.
As a real comments or questions?
Certainly likes you, you have a good resume, you've done things in Granby that are very good. I'll take the motion to hire you, Alex, and welcome you.
Second.
Question by Joyce, second by Amy.
The only thing I wanted to say is I had a chance to go out to the Granby Media website. And it certainly suggests that we have a lot of room for improvement. And if you could even get us to that point, certainly all in favor of hiring you.
It was one joke to me that I made Granby more to penalize you than it used to be. So I'm not sure that's a joke or a serious fault, but. Well, definitely get you guys in the right direction to the 21st century, so.
Great.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chugaloo? Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Knows about pulling.
Yeah, right, you can't do that on the first day.
Why does that person try to jump that? That's a good thing. Welcome.
See you soon.
See you soon.
Soon to zoom.
All right, Jen, the internal transfer from highway to wastewater, you wanna talk about that? You can come to us, Scott.
Would you just like move that chair like out so no one sits in it? There you go. We're hoping to officially change everything instead of a temporary wastewater operator. Just actually give the full wastewater operator position. Back from like April. We'll be back next week and we're.
Do it while that. That's good, that's all that matters. I have no problem with your move. That's fine, we need to make a motion.
We need a motion for this? Okay, motion by Amy.
Second.
Second by Joyce. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chugaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yeah.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wait, don't go away. Does this create a void in highway?
And that's number five.
There we go, the next thing.
Since Devin has been moved over to wastewater, we would really like to fill his empty position in the highway department.
Done it.
Do you have somebody in mind?
I think there is some interest.
Internal?
No.
Have you posted it?
No, we have not. We're waiting for.
For approval.
Your authorization, so.
Okay.
All right, motion?
Second. Give it to Molly, just give it to her.
Any further discussion, Jennifer?
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chugaloo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yeah.
Isar?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now sit tight. Vehicle use policy, you're on that one?
Yes, we're on vehicle use policy and there are two things uploaded to your agenda. And I see that Zach is here also. But basically, one of them, which has markings on it in green, is from Mark Ravinsky, who has been working with the Climate Control Committee about the Green Energy Designation, which the town is actively pursuing because it needs money for us. And the other is marked, sometimes it looks red and sometimes it looks blue, depending on which. But I marked it as legal markup. Our, our legal council has sent this form and they have added, under guidelines, you look there, a breakdown of what those various miles per gallon would be currently, well, according to the 2019 data. This is so you have a sense of what's being asked in terms of if you were buying a new vehicle, this is what it would have to perform. Concern that the Green Air Valley people have is that if we actually put that into the policy that we adopt, people may stop there instead of reading the next line, which is, it is the responsibility of the town of Hadley to check the Green Communities Division Guidance for Criteria 4 for updates prior to ordering replacement vehicles. So I think if we look at the legal for information and it's a sense of what it, what it would mean to the town, then we could go with Mark's change otherwise.
Yes, and I know there's a whole list of whatever here in front of me.
Yes, all the vehicles the town owns.
All the vehicles that the town owns.
So.
So my question, my question is on this, is that the four-wheel drive, the two-wheel drive, the two-wheel drive are your heavy duty trucks, correct?
Correct.
And your four-wheel drives are what you would use, who's, how many people have four-wheel drive vehicles?
Most of our fleet is four-wheel drive. Even the small dump trucks that you see on a more regular basis, those are four-wheel drives also. If you have dual rear wheels on the rear axle, one single on the front, those smaller ones are four-wheel drive also. And most of the DPW vehicles except for a vehicle are exempt because they're over the 8600 pounds threshold.
Okay. We're never gonna get miles per gallon on any heavy duty truck.
No, and they never, also you said that.
That's not something that will, will happen.
No.
In the town itself.
Correct, but all the vehicles we're, we buy do meet the current standards for emissions and fuel economy or, you know.
And they all have to pass emission control.
Correct.
I mean, that's a given on any vehicle today unless it's 2500.
And, and. Yeah, all our vehicles are newer than that, so they all have to pass. Or I'd say there's a couple that aren't, but most of them do have to pass emissions test, so, yeah. Are there options to buy stuff that are just totally out of whack with these requirements? Like, like, once again, the bigger stuff is over 8600 pounds, so it doesn't really. No, I get that, I understand. Yeah. The smaller stuff is, is, I mean, you can't, you don't have a choice of, of fuel efficient vehicle over here and a non-fuel efficient vehicle over here from the same manufacturer, right? It is what it is. Well, kind of, but the smaller vehicles now with the hybrids and, you know, smaller gas and engines and stuff we catch from each other. Yeah. Okay, and I see in here that there's language that where vehicles are commercially available and practicable. So to me, that means we would like to be up here on the fuel efficiency level. But if we can't buy a vehicle that suits our needs and it's down here, we would still be allowed to do it because it's not practicable to be up here. Is that correct? And from my understanding, yes.
Chief Mason has something he'd like to add to that.
So I had a couple of concerns about it. So I reached out to Mark, who is our rep with the Green Energy stuff. That was one of my questions, was basically, what happens if we total lose it? And we called, you know, and we said we want a hybrid, because we're already buying hybrids. But they tell us, you can't get one for a year. And his answer was, all you have to do is check with us first and we will discuss it. And, you know, basically, if he said, if they have three gas models on, on site, get it, build it for you, we will, you'll keep, you won't lose your, you know, your green energy certificate and we'll allow that to happen. The other concern I had was passing down cars to other departments, which we've done quite a bit with cruisers, once they're not patrol useful anymore because we need it to be reliable, they're still good cars. We've given them to DPW, we've given them to building in the past. And there is a restriction written in the, the actual law that says, or the, the policy that they have, that says that you can't do that if the car that they're getting rid of doesn't have worse fuel efficiency. So there's some things that, there's some, some parts of the policy that we are gonna, that are gonna kind of restrict us slightly. But according to Mark, if we're in a pinch and we need to make some of these moves, to answer your question, generally it's yes, but we can't just do it because it'll be faster. We have to go through that and talk to them, but that's.
Did it give you an idea how long that process might take?
He said phone call.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be that bad. He answered all my questions. I had three or four questions for him. He answered them satisfactorily for me.
Any of your vehicles four-wheel drive?
All wheel drive.
They're all wheel drive?
They're all wheel drive, yeah.
Jack, would you like to say something?
I, I would. So if you take a look on page three of what Mark highlighted for us, you will see about half the vehicles are considered exempt. They are larger than standard, the rules don't apply. The Mass D O E R certainly understands that this is a concern. So they exempt those vehicles. They're not covered by this particular part of the policy. And I think that's for a gross vehicle weight, maybe it's 8600 pounds, something like that.
Thank you.
Jane, were there any other objections raised by department heads that haven't been addressed already in the conversation tonight?
No, I think we also spoke with the fire chief and he is content with the policy. And the other piece that had not been written on this form was enforcement at the end. Confirm and identify who will manage the fuel efficient vehicles and the fleet. That would be the town administrator and drop down to the department heads as they are purchasing.
So the only other thing I, I have to say goes back to the, the language that was proposed by town council. I, I certainly understand where they're coming from, but I think the way that they've proposed the language would be cumbersome and it would force us to be constantly updating. And we could actually get in a situation where, you know, the policy didn't get updated in a timely manner and then, and then we have inappropriate guidelines being followed. So I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we could just, rather than include all of the data points that they are suggesting that we could refer to, you know, language suggesting that it needs to be in accordance with the, you know, current guidelines, you know, made available by the town of Hadley or something like that.
Yeah, I think that the legal department just wanted us to be sure that we understood what we were talking about here in terms of vehicle mileage. And I agree that putting it into the document makes it cumbersome because it does change. But if it's spelled out this clearly, then it looks like that's what you're following. And that's the policy we acknowledge.
How often are there inventory changes?
I mean, for the police department, it's generally annually, every time we buy a cruiser, we either move the oldest, next oldest car down to what we call our detail line, which is not suitable for patrol use. And then the car, any car that's on the detail line will get pushed out. So it'll either go to another department or it'll get put on municipal. So, so for us, it could be, for the fire department, likely, I don't know, Mike's on the media.
Yeah.
Our trucks are specked out for 30 years. We usually try to have our fire trucks last 30 years. Smaller vehicles obviously are less, but we run them a long time.
Every year, Susan sends us, you know, just for insurance purposes, she sent us a list of all the vehicles. And this includes pretty much anything with wheels that has to be insured to each department. And we have to confirm that every single year. So we actually just did it a couple of weeks ago. So that gets updated annually. I don't know if you can use the same document for this, but, you know, we, we can confirm annually. It's not heavily listed.
So I guess the only reason I brought up that is because if we're voting on, on this policy, is this an annual policy that needs to be re-upped every year? Or what's, I mean, because if the inventory is changing on an annual basis, you can't, you know, five years from now, look at this and there's, you know, not the same vehicles.
The policy is part of the Green Community requirements that we have to present.
Oh, no, that's fine.
But we don't have to, we don't have to review that. It's within the, policy says, when you're buying a new vehicle, the department heads have to follow these rules.
Okay, so the inventory is not, is not gonna be part of that?
Well, you have to submit it as our current inventory, but we don't have to.
So what, no, I delayed the school department in taking a vote on that because in talking with them and talking with Dr. McKenzie, there isn't any vehicle that they actually buy other than a school bus, the van for special ed. But that always comes through us and through town meeting. So is, is it actually a policy that the school department has to vote on? They have no other vehicles that they're actually purchasing. It's usually us bringing it to town meeting. If we're buying a bus or if we're buying a special ed van or something of that nature, do they really need to vote on it?
I think they need to vote on it in the case that they might someday in the future, when they are very flush, decide to give the superintendent or one of the principals.
They still have to go through us for procurement.
Exactly, but it's requested by the Green Communities that that be signed up. It's two separate things.
See the point to that, but.
That's the requirement. And sometimes there are.
You're gonna buy a vehicle, no matter what it is, a special ed bus or a van.
Right, we own it.
Or are you own it? So you have, you have to notify or reach out to them and say, what we're purchasing, is it within the guidelines? Yes, it is, go ahead and buy the car. So whoever does my procurement is your department.
Bus?
The bus will have to follow that protocol. And then they'll have to, my understanding is just keep, keep an inventory list like Amy was saying, as far as what you own, so they can go back and check it. Because, you know, 10 years, 15 years, I don't know how long buses last. They may move it to another department in town or put it on municipal or whatever it is. And you have to track it if it goes to another department because that department then has to get rid of a vehicle with the worst fuel efficiency than the bus.
What about a riding model?
They're not roadworthy.
I don't think, yeah, I think it's just motor vehicles that are out right now.
Jack, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, so Joyce, to your point, right now, the school department, according to the inventory, has five vehicles, three buses, two small buses. They're all considered exempt. The Green Communities just asked us to take care of this as a whole town and also the, the school committee, just to have this on file.
Okay. I will explain that to them then, thank you.
All right. So there is a time element that the final document for this needs to be, um, what's the date, Jack?
September thirtieth, and actually a little bit before, so we can qualify for this fiscal year.
So we need to.
We need to take a vote, and then the, the school committee also has to take a vote, right? So it's a two-step process?
Right. Is that what you, I mean, maybe it's showing up different online. Can I just?
They have a policy meeting coming up on the ninth.
I mean, can we like request that the inventory be like an amendment? If I know it's saying on here, the following information shall be included in a vehicle inventory list, um, said list shall be updated on annual basis and provided to the green communities division. Does that mean that this needs to be with changes annually revoked on?
No, just supplied to the.
So then that would be inappropriate for this specific inventory list to be on a policy we're voting on today?
That makes sense.
Right?
The same way that the, these things shouldn't be on it.
You should somehow.
No, I mean, but.
It needs to be the initial list, and then what? They were saying it's Sue Glucksky is the insurance agent for the town, means does this list once a year and will supply it.
Oh, Susan has her hand listed. No, I'm just saying it shouldn't be in the final document we vote on today as a, a line item on the policy. It would then have to be an additional amendment annually, not.
You would have to re-vote, uh, re-vote on the whole.
Because if you have changes on it, you'd have to revoke the policy annually.
At any given point in time, I can give you an accurate list of what is insured, what is on the road and insured by the town of Hadley.
So then we shouldn't have that on a binding policy today or something we might be looking at five years from now when it wouldn't be the same?
So.
Recording in progress. This meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we vote on this and pending the inclusion of the vehicle list according to what the Pioneer Valley Group, it's helping us get green community status tells us we need to do.
No.
If I understand what Amy's saying, she's saying we should vote on the policy and not the list of vehicles, is that correct, Amy?
Right, like the inventory list shouldn't be on the policy unless it's as an amendment because it's going to be constantly changing. So if you constantly change the policy, even if inventory is a line item, then it would be something you'd have to re-vote on annually.
Okay, that makes sense.
That makes sense.
That makes sense, Amy.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the policy sans the inventory that we just discussed.
Now, would we have to then say it would have to be an additional annual amendment? Or would, would we just remove it completely and then if it's needed have, you know, because Susan just said that she can give a list at any given time? Is that how we would go about it?
Well, it says it needs to be updated yearly, so she would update it yearly.
That's part of the policy.
Right.
That we're gonna, that we're gonna hold on. So I think that it's, it's kind of a moot point.
Okay.
When we get it, so.
Works for me.
I get Molly's motion.
Any further discussion? Vote call vote please, Jennifer.
Vote call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloum?
Follow your heart.
Huh?
I said follow your heart.
All right, since we're revisiting it yearly.
Well, we're not revisiting the policy yearly, we're just revisiting inventory yearly. So this is binding.
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to, um, Carolyn, UMAS agreement extension.
We've got to be there. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna ask Molly, Molly's been involved with UMAS for a long time. So Molly, I want to give a brief overview of the agreement and what, what I'm asking you to do is to sign an extension. It's an agreement between UMAS and Hadley. Um, it's kind of a partnership, it's a collaboration, recognizing, uh, both the benefits that have and gives to UMAS as well as what we get from UMAS. And, and, and so it's not just the, uh, the financial payment, uh, that they do because they don't pay taxes. Um, it's part of, the state allows for a payment of taxes, which is a sixty thousand dollars that we get annually, but it also involves a lot more to it. Unfortunately, it was, it expired, um, two thousand twenty, so we had a payment for twenty-one, didn't have a payment for twenty-two. Part of that was COVID, UMAS was overwhelmed, uh, the short staff involved, the issues with students, as well as they lost, not lost, they, one of the, Tony Morales, who's, um, the key relations person, he went to another job temporarily. So Nancy Perfong, who I also work with, uh, was not able to really, um, pull this together and we weren't meeting, um, and also it was my, it's like going into my first year, so. But now we have the key step extension. It is just the extension, it's that form that we have, um, and it's, we need that authorization to get the annual payment, but it's only till October and Tony and I meet on a regular basis, we'll be meeting on next week. I get input from, um, some of the department heads about what to put in this agreement, so we're still in that phase, um, but this is just simply an extension. Uh, Molly, that's my brief summary. Did you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, I, I would just add, just to be really clear, if we want to get the sixty thousand dollars that we should have collected, um, by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, we really need to get this, um, addendum approved and signed so that we can, uh, collect those funds and make sure that we're working on the payment for, uh, this coming fiscal year. Or, sorry, it's the current fiscal year.
So there's any other questions?
And so in this agreement, is there, um, and Mike, if you're, Mike, are you still on?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so.
Yes.
Want to make sure that we still are in agreement with them on, uh, territorial of what our ambulance and fire, um, respond to over at UMAS. I want to make sure that, you know, we're in where we should be with the football stadium and the Mullen Center, things of that nature that we are, um, being first called.
So the agreement isn't keep changing, this is just an extension until October. Um, those are the things that Tony and I have been talking about ongoing, um, so we will continue to make sure that that's part of the agreement.
Okay.
But that, that, we are working on that now, and we'll be ready for, maybe by October.
All right, I have a motion.
Shall we move down the addendum, that amendment?
Amy gets the motion. Joyce gets the second. Jennifer, please.
Vote call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloum?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Entertainment license for Barstow. You have an application on four docs?
The Barsters, uh, went to the planning board last night at my request, and here's Denise, Denise Barster man is here for Barstow's, uh, for their entertainment license. I would ask that before we go too far in, that we, uh, seek, uh, input from the planning board and board wire on how the meeting went last night, but Denise could probably start us off by telling us about what their plans are. Please.
Yeah, hi, um, Denise from Barstow's Dairy Store and Bakery in Hockenham. Um, Barstow's been in operation since two thousand eight, um, are part of Barstow's Longview Farm, which has been in operation since eighteen oh six, um, and we did not know that we needed an entertainment license, so we are here to make that right. Um, and yeah, Bill wants to weigh in, what we talked about last night.
Could you speak up, Denise?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, if Bill wants to talk about last night's meeting, that would be great.
Okay, um, let me read you the vote we took. Um, to recommend the select board issue an entertainment license with bands not playing past seven PM.
What was the board's vote, Bill?
Uh, unanimous, five-zero.
Uh, I didn't hear what qualification with the band not, and then it blurred out.
Uh, not playing beyond seven PM.
Not beyond seven PM. Thank you.
Why not eight PM? What's the difference between that hour, Bill?
Uh, they told us that the band stops playing at seven.
Huh?
Okay.
They're not leaving, they're not leaving venue after all.
No.
Bill, did y'all also have any conditions on the days of the week? Or Denise, did you have any conditions that you had?
Um, that wasn't something that I wrote into the permit. Um, we would prefer not to have any conditions. It's really not a big part of our business. It's something that, um, again, we didn't know that we needed this. It's something we've offered before, um, on the weekends in the afternoon or maybe, um, on our burger night, which happens once a month in the summertime on a Tuesday night, uh, and they're done at seven. So, uh, we've never gotten any complaints, um, from our neighbors. So I don't know if we need to have any kind of restrictions on the dates or the times or the months, um, but we would, like, keep it open.
So is there, no, well, hang on a second. They, so the planning board said they voted unanimously for seven. The hours of operation on the application I'm looking at say eight. So when we make our motion, are we making a motion based on what she submitted or what the planning board suggests?
I would recommend based off of how we, uh, worded, uh, the previous entertainment license that we did in AgRes zoning, that we follow the same basis and we follow the planning board's recommendations. And since Denise has just said herself that their band is done at seven, I feel like that would be okay, but I would, I would like to encourage consistency as we're, as we're navigating through, um, agricultural businesses, I would like to, I would like to.
So does this need to be amended and resent?
I will amend, Jane and I will amend their license when y'all vote on it.
Okay.
So if you, if you, you can either vote it for seven PM or you could say based off of planning board's recommendation.
Okay, what I see Amy looking at is their application, which says hours of operation of the business. Is that right, Denise? The, the store closes at eight?
Uh, sometimes, usually it closes at five right now, but.
But, so your hours of operation on the application are for the store itself, not what you are asking for, for your entertainment license, is that correct?
They're not gonna start at six AM.
Yeah, right.
So I think that's correct.
And you're okay with the seven PM ending time?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I hear, Molly.
I'll make a motion to grant the, uh, entertainment license to Barstow's Longview Farm Dairy Store, um, for the venue for music, live bands, local speakers, um, from six AM to seven PM of hours of operation. Second.
Any further discussion? Jennifer?
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloum?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yep.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you, Denise and Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, police constable state primary. So Carolyn?
This is, this request came from our town clerk, Jessica Spankable. She would like the select board, um, this is a vote that is company select board, um, according to section seventy-two of the chapter ninety-two of the backs of two thousand twenty-two. Um, it's to approve a sufficient number of police officers, constables at the polling location, location at every election, daring to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as applied by section seventy-two of chapter ninety-two of the backs of two thousand twenty-two.
So what does sufficient mean?
Up to you.
Well, it's not up to us, what, who, who, I mean, I think it would be up to Jessica.
This is what I, this, I don't think I'm Jessica's.
Have you talked to her about this, Mike?
The fire chief is here and often he's with town clerk.
Really?
Often, often, so if you ask Mike, you might be able to ask her.
Standby, please.
There's normally two, correct?
Yeah, I can tell you what we usually do. The constable at every town meeting, uh, with an officer and at the elections, there's just a constable unless school is in session, and then Jessica always asks for an officer as well. Change in the law simply remove the chief of police working with the town clerk to decide this and inserted select or, or mayor or person in charge of the town. Why?
The town clerk is here, actually.
So elections will now be here anyway and not at the school where we don't have to worry about doors being locked and unlocked.
Okay, we have this.
This request is just a formality on the Voters Act from this past year, so all cities and towns are required to have the select board vote on something that's already been in place. We're not changing anything or amending anything, it's gonna be the same thing that we've always had, it was normally a constable in the election and then maybe a police officer outside, it's gonna be a busy one.
So two is sufficient, Jessica?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
So nothing's changing, but who is the authority or appointed or the number of officers?
Yeah, it's a formality requested by the state, the select board.
Then I move to approve the formality request by the state.
Second. Look, much by Amy, second by Molly.
Give it to God, I don't know.
Vote call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloum?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
All right, moving on to old business. A discussion about the climate change resolution. We were going to have a forum so that people could have input into the resolution, because of the change of Hadley Media and, um, the technology involved, that has had to be postponed so that it can operate correctly. And the Climate Change Committee would like to, um, have a, an educational session, if you will, and with input from residents, it would be, um, either, it would be a hybrid meeting. And then thought has been dandered around about this might be a decision that we would like to put on the fall town warrant instead of having the select board, five people to let the whole town decide what they want to do.
I agree with that.
To be appropriate.
All right, so should we move to have it put on the town warrant?
Sure.
Can I have a motion?
Shall we move?
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Amy. Vote call vote, please.
Vote call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloum?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yep.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a long town meeting.
So, um.
Cinco de Mayo again.
Cinco de Mayo.
Um, so as soon as Hadley Media has.
Up and running.
Up and running, we will, uh, climate change will have a date for the event.
Sounds good.
Jane, Jack's got his hand up.
Yeah, Jane, I want to pass along that the Hadley Climate Change Committee, we have taken, um, advice from different town citizens, different people who came to the last climate meeting, different people who put input on Facebook, and we have basically rewritten the climate change resolution. Um, I'm happy to send that to anyone here who wants to read it.
It's actually, it's on our board docs.
Okay.
Both of them, the old one is the emergency resolution and the draft of the eight-one.
All right, perfect.
And, 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 and Jack, I know your brother's a farmer.
And I was today, Joyce. Yeah, go ahead.
And, and has he spoken on this at all? Have, have any of the other farmers had any?
I speak, I speak to him almost every day before heading out with the crew. I speak, I speak to him almost every day before heading out with the crew. Um, certainly today was a warm one. We had lots of warm days. Um, you know, he's, he's pro doing something about climate change because doing nothing about climate change will get us nowhere. So he and I talk about it quite frequently. I haven't polled other farmers around town. But we have definitely rewritten the emergency declaration and please, um, for all the members of the select board, read it over. And, you know, s- send back any inputs that you have.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Okay, um, the Econo Lodge Letter of Support. We have talked to Laura. I see you're here Laura, or you were. Yes, there you are. Um, she has come back to us as we requested, um, to vote on a letter of support, which makes this the, uh, Valley Community Development, uh, able to apply for the redevelopment that they want to apply for. And it's in your board docs.
I have some things to discuss before we get too far into this.
Okay.
I do too, Randy. So go ahead.
So I was talking with somebody that brought up a very interesting point and I don't know the answer to this, but it was very thought provoking. Um, if we take this business parcel, basically off the business role and turn it into housing. How will that impact the tax revenue for the town in, in the unforeseen future and the unforeseen future for that matter? Um, you know, a motel or whatever business entity is there is worth X amount of dollars. And then you have this housing project, which because it's considered affordable. I don't know if this is true or not, but does that decrease its tax value? And therefore we lose out on the motel tax and we lose out on the real estate tax in a certain percentage. I don't know the, again, I don't know the answers, but I thought it, it was something worth discussing.
Laura?
I'll try to respond. Was that from Randy?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi Randy. Uh, so you had asked a similar question last time about, um, taxability of the project. And the project would continue to be taxed for real estate taxes based on its assessed value. Now whether its valuation would go up or down in its new use, I, I don't have an answer to that at this time. That's something that your assessors would have to determine. We would certainly supply information for them to help them make that determination. But I, I, I don't know. I, I don't think we've, we've determined yet whether it would be higher or lower or the same taxes. When I look at the current tax, um, real estate taxes for the Econo Lodge, it looks like less than we pay for some of our affordable housing in other communities, but that may be just a difference in the tax rate. I, I don't really know. With respect to the lodging taxes, I know that we had done a, um, frequently asked questions, a Q and A that had come around to everybody very early on that talked about the issue of, of the lodging taxes. Um, and you, you know, certainly we wouldn't be paying lodging taxes the way that the Econo Lodge is, the, the owner of the Econo Lodge who owns other hotels in town. His theory is that you would, you kind of have a destination in Hadley with the colleges and that you wouldn't necessarily lose business, but you might divert it to other hotels. Um, and in fact, they're looking for a non-compete from us because they own other hotels. So is it a net loss of revenue to the town? Again, I don't know the answer, but it's not a kind of black and white question. If someone can't stay at the Econo Lodge, which is a fairly inexpensive hotel and ends up staying at a more expensive hotel in Hadley, as a consequence of that, you're going to get a higher, a higher tax. So I don't, I don't know the exact, I don't think anyone knows exactly how that math would play out. But it's not as clear as just, oh, now all that revenue from, um, lodging taxes goes away. Cause I think it's more likely that a much of it gets diverted to other, other venues in town. I will, I will add that the Econo Lodge, when we did an appraisal for it, was running at a fifty-three percent occupancy prior to the pandemic. So again, it's not, was not a fully occupied hotel maximizing the potential lodging tax revenue.
And then, but I guess before.
Wait, wait, let's get Dan on it.
Dan who?
The dog.
The dog. There?
A hundred thousand dollars.
I think that without looking at, at the numbers and seeing what kind of subsidize subsidies that Valley CDC is going to get for the units, it's, it's hard to tell what the real estate tax is going to do. I would say it's probably gonna offset the real estate versus the, the residential property. I, I don't agree with the, the motel tax that it would go up. A lot of times the, the motels in town are full. So once we, once the other hotels hit capacity to that, that motel revenue, that tax is going out of town.
Right.
But the decision I don't think should be made based on the motel tax. We're going to have other motels built in town.
Now with it, it's going to get re-zoned, right?
Going to get what?
No, no. The, so the, the zoning path that's been recommended and discussed with the planning board is, um, called forty B, which is a state zoning regulation wherein a, a sponsor of affordable housing can request waivers. So essentially it's a waiver, a use waiver, but it doesn't in any way change the underlying zoning, um, of the district or the parcel.
Bill, did you want to say something?
No, I would just, uh, I would just confirm that, um, the forty B does not change zoning, does not require town meeting action. Uh, this is something that, um, is authorized by state law.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was going to say, so if for some reason this doesn't work out ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, it is still at commercial industrial?
It's in an industrial zone is, is the zone that it's in currently. Um, yeah, the zone does not change. So this is a special, it's a, the zoning board appeals would make a zoning decision specific to this use. Um, typically we are bound for long periods of time to provide affordable housing. So it would be unlikely to change out of an affordable housing use, but anything is possible. So if that were to be the case, um, yeah, that, that it would still be an industrious, the same zoning that you have now unless the town changes the zoning, which is industrial.
And I think last meeting Jane brought up and asked, um, and here it just says, uh, they have a homeless preference. And I think what, what was asked last meeting and it didn't really have a good answer was if there's preference to, um, Hadley residents in that.
So not, not in that statement that you just read. So under chapter forty B, a town can request local preference through the financing agency, which is the state, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development. To do that, you need to bolster your request with local data. Um, it's pretty common that the state will, um, approve those, but it's not guaranteed. They have a cap of seventy percent local preference and they will only allow local preference during the initial lease up of the property. So it can't be perpetually, um, in place.
So it's kind of a one-time deal for.
Yeah.
As a residence.
Yeah. Yeah. And part of the, part of the logic of that is there's a lot of state money that goes into these developments and federal money. And so they want us, oh, have it open to people who live in the Commonwealth.
So I have, um, yeah, I had a couple of concerns. So, um, we've had, um, the nightly inn was turned into a homeless shelter. We have had issues there.
Yep.
And that Mike can confirm that. Um, we also, my concern is, is that in the clientele that will be, uh, at this place that you're proposing. It's also not just only in a business district. It's near a, uh, elementary and high school. So my, my, my concern is, is that a lot of these homeless people have also have, um, you know, we need to be you know, conscious of and compassionate to, to, to them.
Sure.
But they also have, um, maybe some history of violent offenders, sex offenders. And I don't want to put our children at risk that.
Sure.
In that, down in that area.
Sure.
Do you do Cory checks?
We do. Yeah.
And anybody that does come into there.
Yeah. So we do a tenant selection, e- even when there's a preference for a certain type of tenant, um, we still have authority as the, the landlord to screen tenants. Um, and we do, we do a Cory check. Um, we also do references. Uh, we'll do credit checks. We'll do a background screening. We'll do interviews for folks. And I would just add that we've owned a property at, uh, eighty-two Bridge Street in North Hampton that has housed a similar population for over thirty years. That is directly next door to the Bridge Street School, directly. We share a property line with the Bridge Street School, which is an elementary school. And we recently expanded this property. I went to talk to the school principal and she, she wasn't sure which property we owned. So it is a, a, a case study that there was no interaction at all, um, between the school and, and the property that we owned. Um, but I think, uh, it was a Joyce who asked the question?
Yes.
It's a question we get a lot is, you know, how will we protect the community? How will we protect other residents? I mean, we want the safety of all of the tenants. They will not all be coming from a homeless background. And so a lot of that has to do with tenant screening. The other really important thing is management. And so it's having appropriate levels of staffing, um, onsite and taking action if someone is in violation of their lease. So when we do a Cory check, we are looking for anyone who has the potential to cause harm to another person. Um, and we are looking, uh, we, we have not to date accepted sex offenders into our properties and honestly, I think it's a controversial item, but, um, we're definitely, it's definitely something we're taking into consideration.
What kind of length of tenancies are you seeing in your currently existing buildings?
Yeah. So this is permanent housing, unlike a, a homeless shelter where people don't have a long-term necessarily stake in staying at a place. Um, we see a very wide range. I would say our average median tenancy is probably four or five years. Um, there are a fair number of people who might be there for a year and then they're kind of on to the next situation. We have people that have lived in our housing for twenty years. You know, this is their home. They, they stay, you know, especially retirees. If we get someone in his retirement age on a fixed income, they might be, uh, uh, come a long-term tenant.
And this person that's going to be there, um, onsite, is that a twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven person?
So we, we have a, a service plan. We're proposing a, a live-in prop, prop, program manager who's there, who lives there, who's probably there. Their responsibility would be there to be there off hours. Um, and then during the day, we're proposing a full-time resident services coordinator as well as property management staff. So there'll be more staffing, more robust staffing during the days. Um, and then there'll be someone who is there after hours in case there's a problem.
And just to reiterate, any tenant that, that is there, uh, for whatever reason, they are not required to participate in programs that would help them.
Correct. So we, we can't, we cannot, we cannot mandate that under fair housing law. We can't require people to, to link their shelter to certain participation in programs. We find that people, if we set up programs appropriately, most people will use them. Not everyone and not everyone will need them. I mean, half of the, the proposed clientele for this, uh, housing are potentially people who are working locally. Who just need an affordable place to live. Um, we're especially thinking there will be people working in the malls and in the immediate vicinity at low age jobs who just don't have a car and they want to be close to their, to their job. So we don't expect everyone to have need of the same level of services.
So then how does that feed into the homeless preference?
So we, we are describing a homeless preference on twenty-five up to twenty-five units. And there's no homeless preference on the other half, the other twenty-five units. So this is a mixed population. It's not a shelter. It's not a hundred percent homeless. We're trying to create a more diverse ecosystem. Some people are at very low incomes. Some people are at moderate incomes. Some people have a rental subsidy, so they pay a portion of their income for rent. Some people have a fixed rent. And they have to have enough income to be able to afford that rent. Um, we don't want to have such a concentration um, of high needs folks. We, we like having a, just think it's a healthier ecosystem to have a, a mix. And it's the same reason we have one bedrooms and studios, so that it won't be all single people. You may have a couple. And, and it, it starts to feel more like a typical apartment setting.
Can I just come back to the, um, the financial ramifications that, and Laura, I think, um, uh, this was a talking point that came up, I think in the initial meeting with you that, you know, just a reminder that, you know, the concern about lost revenue. Um, if not the Econo Lodge, the, the, the ball is still in the owner's court to do um, what they want with the property. So there's no guarantee it would stay a hotel anyway. You know, there could be some other, as a matter of fact, one of their other properties.
There we go.
Yeah, they're not, they're not converting or, um, to residential or anything that's going to, you know, be medical. You know, kind of class A space or whatever. So, you know, they, they still have control over, uh, the future use of that property. So um, that's one thing. And then I think the other talking point had to do with, you know, our, our current situation with affordable housing stock. And I believe Bill made a presentation to the board at the last meeting about where we stand. So um, you know, I would also argue if people are concerned about the finances, it's far more expensive or maybe far more expensive. Um, in the absence of the Econo Lodge conversion, uh, down the road for us to, to meet those criteria. Um, because who knows what's going to come down the pike? There's inventory definitely falling off. And, you know, we may have a more expensive proposition in front of us than the one right now.
I, I have more concern over, and Mike, you can chime in afterwards too, about, um, you know, unfortunately homeless people come with other, um, problems such as drugs or mental health issues. That's a big, big one. When people get into certain situations, they can't help it. It just comes with, with that territory. And I want to know if they're going to have somebody there who's trained to, um, guide them through what services they might need. And how are we going to handle it as a town and with our infrastructures of what we're going to need to do?
Right.
I don't know who wants to talk about that one first, but I have concerns about that.
So I just want to, the whole point of what we're doing right now is they're asking for us to give a.
Sign off.
A, no, no, give a letter of support because they can do whatever they want to anyway. It just looks good for them if we all vote to have this letter of support. Right?
Right.
So I, I would say that the state really requires that we ask you for your support. Um, and whether they would still give us money to do this without your support is an untested question. They really strongly prefer us to come in with municipal support. It's not a sign off on the project details because we'd have to go through the zoning board for a full site plan review. That would really dig into the details of the project, including management plans and things like that. This is a more kind of it's a statement of concept really from, from the town to say, yeah, we're, we understand the need for this. We support this. But you're not designing the project, um, at this point.
Okay, Bill Dwyer, you want to say something?
Uh, yeah. Uh, what I, what I would say is that if you would like, um, I would be happy to take a, um, an editor's pen to the letter and perhaps cut it down to something that would be more comfortable for the town to sign. If you would like to put this off to your next meeting, um, I'd certainly run it by CDC. Um, there is some language in there that may be superfluous and, um, maybe if we, maybe we can come up with something that we would all be comfortable with.
All right. I, I think that one of the things that. I, I think that one of the things that I'm hearing from two different places is homeless people can be people who simply can't afford houses. And then there can be homeless people who may have other issues going on. And I think your tenant screening would, would pay attention to that issue, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we're looking for people who are an appropriate match for this kind of housing. And we're also trying to supplement onsite services. I think Joyce is, is right that, you know, people don't become homeless just somewhat arbitrarily. Often there are underlying conditions. And so you can give people a place to live and it's, it's a stabilizing influence. But often you need to back it with other kinds of supports. And that is our, that is our goal. We will work with any number of local providers to provide supports onsite. So the resident service coordinator that I mentioned, who's a full-time social worker basically, to develop individual plans with people to connect them. It's really a connection position. It's not necessarily clinician per se, but to connect that individual with clinical services and to bring services onsite. So if we wanted to have an AA meeting onsite, we could do it. Or any kind of training or service, you know, that, that resident service coordinator would be pulling services to individuals and also trying to connect individuals out into the community where there's a lot of services available.
Do you, would you have anything in your lease that would, uh, give you the capability of asking someone to move? Should they behave inappropriately for the situation?
Yes. So we have a lease, we have a resident handbook. Um, just like any landlord, you, you have to behave and you have to preserve the quiet enjoyment of your neighbors. You have to follow the lease rules, which in our case would include no smoking of anything in the building. And, you know, people are not prohibited from drinking alcohol, just like I can drink alcohol in my house. But what you can't do is create a nuisance for, for other people, uh, who live around you.
But if someone breaks their lease, you can't legally deny them housing. You can't like kick them out.
Yes, you can. That's the whole nature of the lease. You could, you can evict four lease violations.
Mike?
Yeah, I know I had spoken with Laura when we first started discussing this and we started brainstorming a little bit, but I just, I did just wanna, one of the biggest concerns that I had for emergency services, um, and Mike could speak as well, but you know, I, I had expressed that we have, you know, we have one ambulance in our community right now. And there is a bit of a concern, not just on the ambulance side, but in an emergency management sense too. I had gone to the example of how we lost two complete buildings at, uh, Winfield this past winter. And the strain that put on our, on our department and the community to try and find alternative housing. Luckily, we had hotels available. But I just, I just wanted to reemphasize, and I don't know if there's any state funding or support to help us bolster our, you know, our, our resources. So our public safety staff, right now, we have two firefighters on during the day and a deputy chief myself. And we have one ambulance that's at the permanent level and we're attempting to put our BLS ambulance service in place as well. So it'd be, it would be nice to see if there's any support on that side.
I, I, I have, I just want to reiterate, I, I have no issue with what you're trying to do with this site. My concern is the value of the land as housing versus business. And I don't know if Mr. Zadonik can speak to that at all. And I realize that there's more to it than just the numbers because of the affordable part of it that will help us into the future. So I don't know if Bill Dwyer can speak to that to try to help me understand this a little better.
The value is gonna be, would, would be based on the income. The hotel is valued right now based on, on their net income from renting out the rooms. If it's converted to residential units, it would be valued based on the net income from what the tenants pay and whatever subsidies are coming in, less whatever the expenses are. So I, I don't see a big difference between the two uses on the real estate side. It would just be on the, it would just be on the, uh, the motel tax. And like I said, if that hotel disappears and Hojo's disappears, somebody else is going to come in and build and take advantage. The void would be filled by someone else.
I'm not so much worried about the, the motel part. What if something, uh, another business entity would go on that property? That, that's my concern is that we lose the business parcel on Route Nine.
But Randy, you do understand that Hampshire Hospitality is not required to try to affect a transaction that will maximize revenue for the town of Hadley. I mean, we don't have control of that.
I, I understand that. Well, everything I'm saying is hypothetical. I, I, I understand that as well. And, and there's not, you know, not to say that tomorrow somebody might come along and ask Hampshire Hospitality to sell the property to them and they put in this, you know, billion-dollar generate tax generating business for the town. I, I know that's probably not going to happen. So I, I know that it's, it's, it's a gamble one way or the other. I, I get that.
I mean, they're selling Howard John, or they're changing Howard Johnsons.
Right.
So.
Knocking it down.
Yeah, and putting in medical offices, so no doom tax. You know, it, like Molly's saying, you can't predict what it's gonna do. And in the end, the revenue will either be more, the same, or less. And there's not a whole lot. It's a town we can do that, how they need to spend their money for their, their assets.
So are we gonna, I know Bill offered to, to rewrite it or kind of tighten it up a little bit. Is that something that we are okay with? Yeah?
That's fine if you'd like to do that, Bill.
I guess my only, my only question there is, um, if Bill's gonna do that, Bill, do you need, since it's a select board signing it, do you need direction from the select board as to what parts of the language may be problematic? Because, I mean, I, I mean, for me, there's nothing problematic in the language as is. I'm just wondering if, um, you know, anybody wants to provide more specificity, um, in the letter that would help you kind of hone in on that.
All right. So let's talk, is there anyone in the select board who sees something specific in the letter that they think should be addressed?
Again, I have no issues with what they're trying to do there. So I have no problem with this document.
I just, when we approve this, Laura, this is for you to go ahead and keep working on applications.
Yep. Yep.
Is this the final step?
No, this is, this is, this, this is a beginning step. So what this, wh- what I would do with this letter is I would put it with a whole packet of materials that I would send to the state. The state has to, if you're gonna do a, a chapter forty B zoning, which is a state law, you have to have state review where they say, yeah, this, this project will basically say makes sense from a state priorities perspective. If they agree with that, they give me Valley a letter. We take that letter, we put another package together and we go to the zoning board of appeals where we begin a public process that includes public hearings, it includes notification to abutters, and it's what you would think of as a site plan review process. They can hold multiple hearings on that. And sometimes that happens. I've been through forty B processes that can take several months because there are abutters and neighbors who have things to say. There are other stakeholders who have things to say. Um, if the town does grant us a zoning permit, we're still in the early stages because we have to raise the money that we need. And again, it's mostly coming from the state, um, to be able to acquire and convert the hotel. So these processes don't really move very fast.
Probably an understatement.
What is Hadley's homeless population?
What is Hadley's homeless population? In particular? I don't know of a source of data for that. The data that's collected is on a countywide basis. I think I might have put some of it into that letter because they do a point in time count every year in, uh, Hampshire County.
Oh, because they're saying Hadley also recognizes the unmet need within our town.
Well, Mike has found a few people camping out in various places.
Yeah, there are definitely encampments, um.
Yeah, Mike.
I can, I can forward you an email from Michelle, who does point in time count.
Yeah.
Laura, Laura's correct. They break it down like a county. They'll break it down like, like how.
So we should probably tighten up that language.
Well, the unmet need is not necessarily for homeless people. It's for people that can't afford.
Right, it's, right, exactly. It's two sides.
I guess I'm curious with, you know, other than tinkering with the letter, if the select board in general is going to vote to submit a letter of support. Cause to me that's kind of important. And the exact language in the letter could be whatever you all want it to be. I wrote the sample letter at the request of the town. But with no agenda, I mean, you can do whatever you want with it. Uh, I don't, I'm not attached to it in any way.
It is always easier to edit than it is to draft.
There you go. But it, it sounds like we're moving toward, you know, a, a re-edit drafting and I, I, as a listener, I haven't heard that there is a clear consensus so far to issue such a letter. So I guess that's what I was kind of looking for tonight is, is that vote.
Oh, how do we feel about that?
Go down. That's right now.
I'm, I'm fine issuing a letter of support if, with whatever language the board can agree to.
Molly made a motion to the, whatever. Want to repeat it, Molly?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that was a motion. I was just rendering an opinion. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Sorry?
I'll make a motion to issue a letter of support for the project subject to, uh, with, um, Bill Dwyer's help, uh, suitable or, or acceptable language, um, being included in a subsequent draft.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion, whatever.
Okay. For the discussion?
Want to ask a question?
Sure.
So just, just for clarification, is this, you're accepting? I, 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 are you approving it or you're accepting it? You want to see that final document that you come up with?
Right. The, I think the question is, are we going to approve a document?
I think, is the question, are we going to approve a document as a whole or this document or a edited one?
An edited version of this document. I mean, I think, I don't want to put words in, in the Valley CDC's mouth, but I, I, I think at some point, you know, that we've had several meetings and, um, if it's unlikely that they're going to get support from the select board just in general for the project, then, you know, they, they need to decide how to best spend their time, if I can put it that way. So I'm, I'm sensing that's what the CDC is looking for tonight is just, are, are we just tinkering with the language? Or is there a real concern about the project as a whole?
Right.
Is that, okay.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? So basically, we're going to vote on whether we like the idea of this project and want it in Hadley or not by approving this letter with changes that we would look at the final draft for. Any comments? Jennifer, both of those.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure it's really clear, especially for the minute. I have motion to issue a letter of support subject to, uh, edit with acceptable language from Bill Dwyer.
Probably have a timing thing on that.
At our next meeting.
So it, it will come back to you.
What's your concern?
Are you supporting that letter? It's, it's unclear because you, you're still, you're still going to be an open.
It's supporting a letter of support pending wording.
What I understand we're voting on is that we will, we are going to accept the letter as amended, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's up.
The, the discussion isn't whether we want to do it or not. It's, we're going to vote to accept or to.
Administer this letter.
Send the letter once we get language.
Um, just the motion to agree, motion to issue a letter of support with the edits in it. So I, I, maybe I'm reading my motion that I could, Molly wrong, but I was reading it, y'all are voting whether or not you support the project and then you'll do the edits. Is that your intention, Molly?
Uh, my intention is.
Support the project and obviously we're not going to support this letter. So the vote would be, this letter would be in support rather than.
I, I, I can use either of those clear.
Okay.
I, I'm, that's just my recommendation because it's, if that sounds different in some of the discussions, so just want to make sure. The minutes accurately what you guys are. Do not like my motion. I mean, I wrote it down. I thought how she said it. Molly, can you repeat your motion? Are, are edits coming back to you or you?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to, um, for the select board to agree to issue a, uh, a letter of support for the Econo Lodge project as presented by the Valley CDC subject to acceptable language changes to the current draft letter to be voted upon at the next select board meeting.
That's clear.
Okay.
It's recorded. You can go back and rewind it to write it down for the minute.
Over and over again. All right. Any further discussion? Relating Jennifer, finish writing before we actually do her next task.
Okay.
All right, roll call votes, please.
Roll call, who? Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chudaloo.
Upstein.
Parsons?
No.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right.
Can I please have like a thirty-second bio break?
Watch out for the cords. Yeah, you want us to go ahead?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go.
All right, Tomorrow Road, yes.
This is part of the Tomorrow Road Trails project.
Which we've already done, basically.
Well, the whole project is called the Tomorrow Road Trails. And one of the entrances is Bay Road and that's the kiosk that you guys have approved. It's the similar, as you can see on there, it's a similar design, similar wording. They just changed, um, you are here, obviously. And, um, so they're gonna keep the title of the map, map, excuse me, the title of the map as Tomorrow, Tomorrow Road Trails. They're trying to keep that as one trail. So regardless of which road you, you enter on. So they want you to review the map, which I hope you did and approved the production of that. You're okay with that. I just need to let Stuart know that. And the other area is, there's signage around the parking area that says, "Hadley Residence Parking Only" signs. But there are a bunch of no trespassing signs there. So, um, his comment is clearly the trails are open to the public, so we'll need to take those signs down at some point. So he wants to know about the signs and he wants to know if he needs an approval of the map.
Hey, so how did the trespassing signs get there? Did police put them up? You have no information on that.
I, I had trouble finding out whether they're there. So there might be some history on the board, you know. I, it actually was back in the reservoir, reservoir, okay, to provide water to the town. He did one of people's, can you get me an underwater supply? Okay, that's, that's, that's what it is though. The no trespassing is there to protect the water supply of the town when it was water supply, the backup water supply to the town.
Well, since we don't theoretically let people swim there.
It's not letting them, they do it.
Theoretically, actually.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent as is and the removal of trespassing signs.
Okay.
All one, all one motion.
All one motion.
Second.
Second by Randy. All right.
Devon Smith?
Yes.
Chugalo?
Yes.
Parsons, you aren't here, abstain.
Abstain.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other items not anticipated? Don't know of any. Town administrator report?
Do you want like a slow version?
The slow version, Kevin. We all want to spend the night.
Pretty empty now, but.
So I, I just want to let you know, the capital request form went out to department heads and communities and boards. I asked them to have it back for August 31st. The finance team has been working on forecasting the revenue for special town meeting, looking at trends and anticipating free cash. Again, we're not going to know towards end of autumn, beginning of September, where our free cash is. But we have a pretty good estimate of what it's going to be. So it did, I don't think there's a liaison for the capital. The liaison get appointed.
I don't think we have one.
So that I will need probably by the next select board meeting. In my third week of the procurement classes, so it's been going well and I've got a few more weeks left. A reminder that on Tuesday, August 16th, our town council will be there at the library. Just to clarify, it's not open to the public because they don't serve the public. They serve the staff and employees and boards. But they will be there to inform and we'll have lunch. It will be a good opportunity to meet recently. And the bylaw committee, I'm very happy, is meeting. They're doing well. The next select board meeting, I'm going to have you appoint the co-chairs as well as what their official charges they've got the word for. So we'll be moving forward. So much needed today. And our PPs came back from the trailers, unfortunately, about double the cost of what we had budgeted for. So I've met with Tommy, Scott and Gary. We're looking at different options. And, you know, the concern is the office staff and that break room. So we're just looking at different options that might be more affordable. And once we have some options to recommend, I'll bring that back to the select board. And then we also have the warrant for the 2022 state primary for you all to sign.
Is Paul McCretsky on the Capitol?
Yep, we're meeting on Thursday.
Okay, for some reason, I saw him a couple of weeks ago and he seems to think I'm the liaison.
You were?
Did he get appointed?
He did.
I thought you did too, but I couldn't find it.
He did. He volunteered for it.
Okay, I'm in.
Okay, that's easy.
That was easy.
What are you doing Thursday morning?
What time?
10:00.
I'll have to check what's her name, Siri, and see if she's got anything for me.
All right, that's it.
All right. Announcement?
Well, I did, uh,
You didn't do any last time.
I didn't do any the last time.
Thursday tomorrow.
Oh, this is March 12th.
Hey, where?
November.
To the family of Walter Winesick, who ran a business on Route 9 for vegetables and fruits for quite a number of years. Our condolences to his family. He was quite a stable there for many years. And then also there was a Dennis Bristol. He was a East Hampton resident, but he was born and raised here, went to local schools. And there are many other Bristol families that live here in town. So our condolences to them also.
Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Go ahead, please. Any second. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote. Devon Smith?
Yes.
Chugalo? Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.